We'll call, yeah.
Don't open that.
They don't even provide me with a gavel, okay? And it's a diet coke, so.
I'm not good.
Anyway, I'm gonna stand up for my opening, but then we'll sit down and have our discussion. But anyway, I'm Margaret Fire Robin. I'm currently serving as Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee. And I want to welcome everybody and thank y'all for attending tonight's meeting. This is a special called work session of the Bristol, Tennessee City Council. Tonight, the City Council is hosting Ballard Health officials for the opportunity to better understand the realignment of trauma care and other healthcare services in Bristol in our region. We welcome y'all and appreciate your taking time to spend with us. We especially want to welcome, in addition to us, Bristol, Virginia Vice Mayor Kevin Wingard, Council members Bill Hartley, Andrew Fornum, Neil Osborne, and City Manager Randy Eads. So, welcome y'all, and we appreciate your ability to attend and understand that y'all are gonna be leaving early to go to your own council meeting. So, it's great that you were able to make it all work. And also, I'll say, we spent time with some of y'all this morning at a meeting with our downtown folks. Tonight's meeting will include a presentation by Ballard Health officials addressing the planned realignment of healthcare services and how this impacts our Bristol area as well as the region. And I understand the presentation's an hour or so, something like that, just so people can anticipate. Go to the bathroom if you need to get a soft drink, water. Following the conclusion of the presentation, the council will have opportunity for dialogue with Ballard officials. You can tell us if you want any questions as you go along or wait till the end regarding the information that's presented this evening. As with all our City Council work sessions, our agenda does not provide for opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to address council on matters discussed this evening or at other matters, you're always encouraged to attend our business meetings, and that's on January 8th is the next one, at 7:00 PM at the Slater Center. In addition, comments may be addressed to Ballard Health if you want specific questions or if you have concerns. The Tennessee Department of Health at the websites, they're on sheets back there. Also, there's an agenda that's hardly worth picking up for the agenda, but this might be helpful if you're interested in making contacts. The creation of Ballard Health, the merger of our regions two hospital systems is very complicated. Hopefully, that's correct, to say the least. Layered and is happening at a time that when healthcare in our country, the costs associated with it, the access to is influx with costs and access availability. The availability for human caring, taking precedence, can be very personal and very emotional. Tonight, you're invited to, all of us are invited to learn of the planned reorganization of healthcare services in our region. While you're with us this evening, and it looks like we've got a good crowd here, that we expect that we all respect the rights of those on our agenda to deliver their presentation in an uninterrupted fashion. So, and also, I'll say, but don't anticipate it from anybody here, but if there were disruptive or unruly behavior, it's not gonna be tolerated. And if so, folks will be escorted from the meeting. Again, there's information by the door. Your understanding and respect for those engaged in tonight's meetings appreciated. And I think that's what, I guess, I'll say my last thing I was gonna say possibly, but I'm sure all of us here, and Greg, and citizens here, that in Bristol, we've been proud of our Bristol Regional Medical Center, its doctors, its staff. We're reluctant, just like everybody else, to give up assets that perhaps have been worked hard to obtain, but we want to work with the system and the moving parts and be ensure that our citizens and our community are treated fairly and equitably in the process, and we believe those are your goals as well. So, with that, Alan Levine, we welcome you.
Well, would you want me to stand up here?
Probably stand up so everybody, and if anybody can't hear, we'll try to talk louder, but this room has pretty good acoustic. So, oh, wait, I failed to introduce Mark Hutton, who is on our county commission. For any other elected officials in the room, I don't think any other elected ones. So, welcome, thanks.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you. It's always great to come here and have a chance to interact with folks who give up so much of their own time for public benefit, and we're grateful for what you guys do. Also, I want to say, we're grateful to the folks who don't agree with what we're trying to do. I mean, I think there's room for a lot of different opinions, and there's room for a lot of different, there's room for a lot of different feelings on this, which is why our board went through such a deliberative process to get us to this point. I think, let me start by saying one thing. We are blessed to have Greg Neal as the CEO of Bristol Regional Medical Center. And in fact, we were so impressed with Greg, we made him the CEO of our entire Northeast Division of Ballard Health. So, he's actually over all of our hospitals in Abington, in Smith County, and up in Russell County as well, as we try to create a more coordinated system. And I think you're gonna see some data here that you'll be very pleased with in terms of what he's been able to accomplish in a very short time. Just a little reminder about how we got here. You know, four years ago, the Board of Wellmott was very forward-thinking when they were looking at the future of healthcare, and they were looking at our region, and they saw some things that I know we saw at Mountain States at the time, and that was, you know, we had very high use rates for hospitalizations, a high inpatient utilization rate, about 126 patients per 1,000 were being admitted to the hospital. The rest of the country averages somewhere between 90 and 100. And what's happening, the healthcare marketplace is starting to drive down the use of inpatient hospitalization. And when you combine that with the population dynamics that we're seeing in the region with very little population growth, particularly in Southwest Virginia, and a lot of the counties in Southwest Virginia were seeing either stagnant or negative population growth. And I think our friends from Virginia would validate that. Russell County had a 9% projected decline in population. Smith County's projecting a decline. Washington County's fairly stable, but not growing very much. And certainly, the rural areas throughout the region are seeing a decline. And the challenge, when you operate 21 hospitals, or when you were Wellmott and Mountain States and you're operating these hospitals, they're, most of them at 50% or less capacity, in an environment with no population growth and declining inpatient use rates, clearly, that's not a business model where you can sustain your assets over a long period of time. And Wellmott made a decision to look at external partners, and that's what's going on all over the country. In the last eight years, almost 100 hospitals have closed, or, and hundreds of others have been sold to large systems for very much the same kind of reasons. And most of those closures or sales are occurring in non-urban markets like this, where hospitals have faced, that were in small systems or standalone hospitals, were faced with the inability to capitalize because they didn't have any growth. And, you know, a place like Nashville, or Asheville, or Charlotte, where you have a lot of population growth, as the inpatient use rates had come down, there was enough population growth where the hospitals could continue to grow. We have not seen that. We have seen a decline, and in fact, year-to-date, through October, we're seeing about a 5% to 6% decline in the current fiscal year in inpatient utilization relative to prior year overall as a system. And so, we expected that. We predicted that. What we did not predict four years ago, but what we are now concerned about is that region, throughout the region, we have a 7% decline in births in the last four years. So, the challenge we have as a system of healthcare is no population growth, a decline in births, which began four years ago, which we're starting to see, which we'll see in our schools and we'll see in our small businesses. It's gonna go through, it'll go, I mean, as that population ages, we're gonna feel that. And so, the decision was made at the time that it was better for us to merge. And the reason for that is, I think, the Wellmott Board and the Mountain States Board, both after years of fierce competition, decided, we see what's coming. It's more rational for us to figure out how to organize our health delivery system locally, as opposed to having those decisions made by a corporate entity somewhere else whose stakeholders are Wall Street investors or bondholders that don't live here. And our board lives here. Now, one of the things that's been said recently that I really want to try to address is, our board, you know, there were comments made that, you know, this whole decision about trauma and NICU is really a, you know, it's part of the Mountain States takeover of Wellmott, or, you know, we're trying, this is the first in a long, this is the first step towards moving business away from, you know, Bristol and Kingsport to Johnson City. Let me tell you, that's absolutely not correct. Just looking at the composition of our board, 25% of our board lives in Johnson City. 75% of the board lives elsewhere. Our lead independent director lives here in Bristol, Virginia, and was on the Wellmott Board. The Chair of the Committee that made these recommendations lives in Kingsport and was on the Wellmott Board. Five of our seven corporate leaders on our executive hallway live in Sullivan County, in either Kingsport, Bristol, or Colonial Heights, and two of us live in Johnson City, myself included. This is, this was a true merger, where we have the best talent from both legacy systems making these decisions. And I feel really good about the process the board went through, you know, as they considered both the trauma and the NICU decisions. Before I go into it and give you a little bit of an update on Bristol, and then get into the NICU and trauma decisions, I'll first talk about trauma and then the NICU. Throughout the process, the thing that really encouraged me the most is our board members kept asking the same questions. If this were my family, if this were my child, if this were an emergency situation with my family, what would I want? And this question kept, it kept coming back to that over and over again. And board members shared their personal experiences, everything from their personal experience with pediatric, urgent care, and emergency services, to their experiences with our emergency departments and trauma programs. They live here. Their kids and grandkids live here. They've all had some direct experience with these hospitals. And so, what I enjoyed about the process was watching the board go through a very deliberative approach from the standpoint of, how does this affect me? Because I live here. And that was, you know, there were moments throughout that process where I felt like that was the essence of the merger. We knew this was gonna be a tough decision, but we said during the merger process, we would rather make those tough decisions ourselves than have them imposed on us by people who don't live here and who don't have to live with the consequences of those decisions. Now, about Bristol, and this is really important. Bristol is a critical tertiary hospital for Ballard Health. What is tertiary? Tertiary is, those are the services you provide, like open-heart surgery, neurosurgery, orthopedics, you know, high-end diagnostics. Those are services you provide. Not every hospital can provide tertiary services, nor should they. A common theme you're gonna hear throughout this presentation is volume equals experience. In healthcare, volume equals experience. The more you do of something, the better you are at maintaining your competency. That's important for doctors. It's also important for our staff. So, this is why you wouldn't have a neurosurgery program in Smith County, because there's not enough volume there for the doctors and the staff to maintain their competencies. But, it's really important for us in Bristol, Kingsport, and Johnson City to have tertiary hubs where we can have those high-end specialty services for all of these outlying areas so that we have the specialists to support those communities. So, here in Bristol, there's enough volume to support neurosurgeons because we refer all of our neurosurgery business from all of those hospitals to Bristol. Didn't always used to be that way. Before February, it used to go past Bristol to Johnson City. And I'm gonna show you some statistics that I think will be compelling. I'm proud to announce to you that just last week, our Board Finance Committee approved our recommendation to spend $1.7 million to buy a second DaVinci robot here at Bristol. It'll be the second, we've created a real center of excellence for robotic surgery. Already, we're doing urology and GYN, gynecology services there. And this allows us to really expand into general surgery, which is a growing area in robotics. We're really proud of this, and hopefully in the next month or two, the new robot will be here. Eric, I think I just put a little pressure on you, didn't I? You know, we've invested in the Truebeam Brain Lab. That's something we're also investing in at Holston Valley, which will improve our neurosurgery program for tumor care and cancer care. You know, we're investing a lot in physician recruitment right now here in Bristol and in Southwest Virginia, very aggressively. In fact, we just recruited a new cardiologist in Withville up in Virginia. We've got additional priorities that we've established here in Bristol that we're investing in right now. Obviously, you're aware of the cardiac rehab program that we've partnered with Prudential to do here in Bristol. In fact, we're now focusing on expanding that into primary prevention. Cardiac rehab is people that have already been affected by a cardiac condition. Primary prevention is identifying those people that are at risk and engaging with them even before they have a cardiac acute episode. And you really don't find anybody in the country doing that because no one pays for it, but we're actually investing in doing it here, and it's gonna start here in Bristol. So, these are some good investments that we are making. Here's what's happened since the merger occurred. You might remember before the merger, when we were advocating for the merger, we said, you know, there's a lot of irrational things that Mountain States and Wellmott were doing for competitive reasons. So, for instance, if a patient showed up at an Abington with a cardiac condition that needed a high-end intervention, like open-heart surgery, those patients would be referred from Abington to Johnson City. They would be referred right past Bristol to Johnson City. Why? Because Mountain States wasn't gonna refer patients to our competitor. Similarly, Wellmott did the same thing. You know, business cases, different types of procedures would not be referred, particularly with children. A lot of children were referred out of the region to Knoxville because Wellmott wouldn't refer to Nicewonger. And so, you know, that goes back to well before any of us were involved, there's just, there was a cultural, real distinctive inclination to refer away from our competitors. Since the merger has occurred, you can see the only two hospitals in our system whose volume is actually up is Bristol and Holston Valley. And that's because here at Bristol, all of the business that was being referred from Smith County, Russell County, and Abington that used to be driven past here is now being referred to Bristol. Similarly, in Kingsport, here's what used to happen in Kingsport all the time, you know, and if you want to keep EMS units in Sullivan County, this should be music to your ears, because any time a patient would go to Indian Path, our ER at Indian Path would systemically refer those patients. If they needed higher-end services, they'd be referred to Johnson City. And many times, those patients were referred and transported using EMS, taking those units out of Sullivan County and into Johnson City. We're not doing that anymore. Those patients are now being referred to Holston Valley, and you can see it in the numbers. That's why JCMC's volume is actually down while Holston Valley and Bristol is up. This is the right thing to do for patients, and this is one of the things we said we would do once we merged. And I feel really, I feel like it's a good outcome for both Bristol and for Holston Valley. I want to make this commitment to you, and I'll say it two different ways. The first way is, I'm making this commitment because we want to. Bristol is a really important asset, not just to this community, but to the whole region. It's important to Ballard Health. I was up in New York last week, meeting with the rating agencies, the bond rating agencies who rate us. And it couldn't have been more joyful to tell them about the great things that are happening here at Bristol, Johnson City, and at Holston Valley. We have three amazing tertiary hospitals, all of which have received amazing recognition for the things they've done. And we don't want to undo that. That, in fact, I want to say it in a positive way. We want to invest in those things. That's why you're seeing some of the capital investments that we're making here at Bristol. So, number one, we wanted to remain a tertiary hub because we want to. And two, we made a commitment to the state that we would do that. Under the COPA, we must keep these three hospitals as tertiary hubs. And so, you can't close an open-heart program or a neurosurgery program or orthopedic program and call it a tertiary hospital. You just can't do it. And so, we are committed to this for a lot of reasons. And I dare say, our lead independent director, who is the, while I'm the Chairman of the Board, the lead director, the way we've structured our board, the lead director is the independent director, who, every board meeting, I leave at the end of the meeting, and he takes over the meeting. And they talk about whatever they want to talk about without any management in the room. I dare say, our lead independent director would have some fierce opposition, as would a lot of members of our board, if we wanted to start moving services out of Bristol that needed to be in Bristol. And I don't want to speak for the Board, but I, not once in the nine months since we've merged, has there been one conversation about moving any of these services out of these hospitals. So, these components are gonna continue here. We do teaching here. In fact, we're looking to expand rotations here for teaching, for physicians and for physician assistants and other types of allied health professionals. You know, emergency and trauma care is gonna continue. And I want to make it clear, there's a difference between trauma and emergency care. Heart attacks, strokes, all of that still goes to the closest hospital. None of that's changed. And frankly, we have some really great things with heart attack care and stroke care that we're doing as a system that I think are really improving the lives of people in our region, as we've created systems of care. For instance, with stroke, if you go to any of our hospitals, we've deployed protocols. So, our hospital here, Bristol, can handle stroke. So can Holston Valley. So can Abington. All of these hospitals, when a patient comes in with stroke symptoms, there are protocols they deploy. But if somebody needs very high-end intervention, for instance, for an aneurysm, Johnson City Medical Center has an interventional radiology program that does a coiling, which is a very high-end, very low-volume procedure. You really can't do it everywhere. It's gotta be done in a place where you've got some of those support systems in place. But because of the system we have, there's connectivity through telemedicine with the stroke center there, which is a licensed, or a certified comprehensive stroke center. So, no matter where you go, you have the highest level of care, no matter where, whether you're in Hancock County, or in Sullivan County, or in Smith County. You're getting access to the highest level of care. And if you need to be at a different level than where you're at, we have systems in place to transport you immediately where you need to go. And so, that's how we're approaching things. Instead of a bunch of individual hospitals doing things, we're trying to approach things as a system of care. And we think that's, number one, it improves quality, but it also helps reduce the cost of care for people. And I think that's actually a really positive thing. A little bit about trauma. Our three trauma centers are the three lowest-volume trauma centers in, you can't really see the pointer here, but if you look at Johnson City, Holston Valley, and Bristol, they're the three of the lowest-volume ones in the state. Now, there's a reason for that. If you look at Memphis, there's one Level 1 trauma center and one pediatric trauma unit. If you look in Nashville, there's one Level 1 trauma center, one Level 2, and one pediatric trauma unit. Go to Chattanooga, there's one Level 1 and one pediatric trauma unit. In Knoxville, there's one Level 1, one pediatric trauma unit. Then you get up in our region, we have two Level 1s and a Level 2 with no pediatrics. I'm gonna talk about pediatrics later because it's an important issue for the region. But what the commonality there is, everywhere you have a Level 1 trauma center, you also have a pediatric trauma unit. And so, there seems to be a mismatch in our region in terms of resources. And if you look at, if you look at the 75-mile radius around each of these, you know, in Memphis, Memphis's trauma center, Level 1, is actually part of both Mississippi and Arkansas's trauma system. It serves a population of multiple millions of people, and obviously, a great distance. Vanderbilt, same thing. Erlanger, there's no Level 1 trauma center between Chattanooga and Atlanta. UT Medical Center, same thing. There's only one trauma, Level 1, there's only one trauma center in all of that region. Here, we have two Level 1s and a Level 2, and you can see the overlap. If you go to Charlotte, North Carolina, they have one Level 1 trauma center. Asheville has no Level 1 trauma center. They have a Level 2. And the closest Level 1 is over an hour away. The entire state of Maryland has one Level 1 trauma center. And the reason they have one Level 1 trauma center, we've looked at this, they have an integrated, what we call an inclusive trauma system. Throughout the state, there are protocols, and there's partnerships with EMS, so that there's identification of what levels the patients are at, and they try to get the patient to the closest appropriate trauma center. But the major, major trauma goes to the Level 1. And I'm gonna talk more about that in a minute, and why that's critically important. But you can see, from Vanderbilt, you can see the draw area from where their patients draw from. And of course, if you go over to where we are, it's clearly a much larger draw area, both in terms of transport times and population density. Now, the question the board had, as we went through this process, was, okay, let me explain what levels mean. There's basically, in Tennessee, we have three levels. Level 1, Level 2, Level 3. Level 1 is the highest-level trauma. The difference between a Level 1 and a Level 2 really gets to what specialties you have on call. And with a Level 1, your general trauma surgical specialty has to be in the hospital 24/7. Now, the other aspect of a Level 1 is you have to do research. So, the difference between Level 1 and Level 2 is Level 1s do research, and they have a lot of, you have a lot of specialties that you're required to have on call. Level 2, you don't have to have the general surgical specialties in-house, they have to be available on call, and you don't have as many specialties that are required to be on call. That's what we have here in Bristol. Now, and Level 3 provides all the same services, there's fewer specialties that you're required to have on call. But here's the analysis the board did. Very early in the process, they said, okay, it's nice to know what the levels are, but what specialties are actually being used? Because what we're doing right now, keep in mind, we're in an environment where there's a shortage of about 25,000 physicians in the United States and growing. Last year, there wasn't more than 300 urologists that came out of training nationally. And our region, it's very difficult And our region, it's very difficult to recruit and retain doctors. There's a few things that are important to the doctors. Number 1, is there enough volume for them to sustain their skills? 2, is there enough volume for them to make a living? And 3, one of the big problems for us is, our region of the country has the second-lowest, what we call the Medicare Area Wage Index in the United States. Here's what that means. A patient that has open-heart surgery at Bristol, if that same exact patient went to Asheville, the compensation to the hospital for that patient would be 20% to 30% higher in Asheville than it is here. And that's because our area wage, the way Medicare establishes how they pay hospitals, really, it does a disservice to rural and non-urban areas. And I just testified before the US Senate, about a month and a half ago, on this very issue. And in fact, after my testimony, the Office of the Inspector General came out with an analysis that validated what I said, which was, the Medicare Area Wage Index is one of the biggest reasons why rural hospitals are closing. And so, we struggle. Here, we have three trauma centers, where we have to triplicate everything we're providing on coverage. That comes with consequences. People might think that we have a solid Level 1 or a solid Level 2 trauma center here, but the reality is very different. And I'll show you the data in a minute. But if you look, between general trauma surgery, orthopedics, and neurosurgery, 67% of our total consults are orthopedics and 25% are neurosurgery. Most of the other specialists are either hardly ever, or are never called in. But the cost of keeping all those specialties available 24/7 for services for which they never get called in, it doesn't make sense, from our perspective. The board's position was, we should be investing in creating more consistency in those specialties that are needed. And then, those other specialties, where you would be more likely to have a multi-systemic trauma, have it at a higher-volume trauma center, we have more consistency in the coverage. Why is this important? These bolded specialties are ones that we've had trouble with. And I'm going to ask you a rhetorical question. That's rhetorical, but this is happening. If you had a choice between two, if you, God forbid, should ever have to have neurosurgery for a traumatic brain injury, would you rather have a doctor who lives here, who knows your IT systems, who knows your OR staff, your ER staff, your trauma staff, your ICU staff? More importantly, they know your doctor, and how the doctor practices. They know the doctor's order sets. Would you rather have that doctor, or would you rather have a doctor that flew in the night before, who was just trained on your IT system, who's sitting in a hotel room waiting for the phone to ring, because they're on call, checking a box to cover call for a trauma center? This is not, this happens. Over the last year and a half, at one of our hospitals, we, almost 40% of the trauma call for neurosurgery was covered by what we call locum tenens neurosurgery, which is temporary neurosurgeons. Urology, that's happening to this day, right now, in one of our communities where we don't have full-time urology. We're paying the cost of this. It's over a million dollars a year to pay for a urologist to sit in a hotel room and wait for a phone call, where they get called in six times in a year. This is not a good use of our very limited healthcare resources. We think it's better to repurpose and realign these services, and take those dollars, and reinvest them in things that we know we need. For instance, a pediatric emergency department right here in Bristol. So, you pay a million dollars for temporary urology coverage for six visits, or you spend that million dollars plus putting a pediatric emergency doctor with social workers who understand the special needs of children. You had more than 6,000 pediatric ER visits here last year that didn't benefit from a pediatric specialty ER. So we think that's a better use of those resources that will touch way more people. And that's really what the board's posture here is. It's not, we've been accused of doing this to, the words used were almighty dollars, this is for the almighty dollar. If this was for the almighty dollar, we wouldn't be making the investments that we're trying to make. And that's the part that seems to be missing from some of the dialogue here.
Before you go forward, let's go back to the urology, because I think there's some misinformation that is in the country, to give you an opportunity to clarify that. You'll go back to that slide.
Yeah.
Okay, the urology you said was six visits, and was this a urologist that was spun in specifically, or brought in specifically, or is that a urologist that does in that practice in the whole region?
It's both. There's, so in Kingsport, for instance, there are several urologists that do not want to take call for trauma. And so, they refuse to go on the medical staff at Holston Valley, because they don't want to be required to take trauma call. So there's only so many urologists there, and you have to have 24/7 coverage, 365. They can't cover every day. So what happens is, the days that they can't cover, we have to fly them in, and it's a temporary urologist, who we give temporary privileges to. Now, they're qualified. I don't want to make any assertions about their qualifications. But the reality is, that's just, that's what we face all the time. And it's not just Bristol, I mean, this happens in Johnson City, in Bristol, and in Kingsport. And it's happening with more frequency.
But that individual, you bring in just to say those six, they're not seeing anyone else?
They might get called in for general ER call. You know, urology is not one of those specialties that gets called in a lot. But, you know, but they could...
But they don't have a practice, they're not seeing patients outside of whatever's going on right in the hospital.
That's the big issue with temporary coverage. You got coverage for when they're in the ER, but if they don't live here for follow-up care, the doctor leaves. And so, there's...
Physicians have to do the follow-up for them.
Yeah, so the other doctors end up having to step up and do all that follow-up care. And I have to tell you, this has become sort of a contentious issue between the different cities. Here and in Johnson City, it's the same urology group. And what happens is, when there's no urology coverage in Kingsport, a lot of times, they're called in to help, and they're not on staff at Holston Valley. So they feel like they're getting patients dumped on them, which is the word that's used. It's not my word. And so, this, we think, helps address some of those issues. That's a great question.
So is that a private practice that you're speaking of, and it's not a hospital-owned practice?
Yeah, we don't employ any urologists.
Because our family has had difficulty in getting in with urologists, that's the motivation behind it.
And that's a problem here. We are working to try to recruit more urologists, but as I said, it is hard to get them. There's just not a lot coming out of training. And frankly, some of the technology that we're buying, like the robots, like the DaVinci robot at Bristol, that's a major recruitment tool for urologists, because the new ones coming out of training, they're all trained on the robots.
Thank you for taking your questions.
But here's part of the other challenge. You know, this is just full transparency. All three of our trauma centers have been cited by the state with deficiencies related largely to inconsistency in physician coverage and response times. And so, we are, you know, this was something that got our board's attention, because, you know, over the last five years, what drives this is, for instance, we found out, one of the things that even today, and we're working on this, we still have three independently-operating trauma centers that collect their data differently, that, I mean, just getting data from them, and that's consistent, is very difficult right now. But what we found out, as we were doing this analysis, you know, we got cited, one of the things we got cited for is, there were days where the same surgeons were covering two different trauma centers, which you can't do. Well, we didn't know that. When we were Mount States and Wilmot, we weren't talking to each other. So we might have had the same neurosurgeon covering two different hospitals, and we didn't even know it until we got cited for it by the state. Remember that, Eric? And it was shocking to us. But so, anyway, you know, these are, you know, now, just to show you, ISS, the Injury Severity Score is, is, is it Injury Severity Score?
Injury Severity Scale.
Scale. Injury Severity Scale Score. Easy for me to say. So, a score of above a 15, what happens is, after a patient has been in the hospital, they're assessed and scored, based on their injuries, and length of stay, and all that stuff. You can see roughly 10% of the total visits here at Bristol were considered major trauma. Now, why is major trauma an important concept? The American College of Surgeons verifies trauma centers. The minimum standards for trauma are your state certification. So for instance, Bristol Regional Medical Center is accredited by the Joint Commission on Accreditation of Healthcare Organizations. We don't have to be accredited by Joint Commission. We could have state certification. State certification's the lowest level of certification. Most hospitals choose to be accredited by Joint Commission, because it's a higher standard of quality. It's much more rigorous, it's really hard to go through those survey processes. The same is true for trauma, with verification by the American College of Surgeons. Right now, not one of our three trauma centers is verified by the ACS. And the reason for that is, in part, we couldn't even get through the front door for verification, because they require at least 250 to 300 major traumas before they will even look at you. Now, why is that? Well, remember what I said earlier, why you wouldn't put a neurosurgery program at Smith County, because you don't have enough volume to sustain your quality? That's the same thing that the ACS feels about trauma, and all the studies support that. Major brain injury, major trauma, all the studies support that the outcomes are better in higher-volume centers, where your staff and your physicians can maintain their skills. What we've been doing here is basically diluting the volume of major trauma. And that's not the best, that's not the best patient care. It may be good enough, but it's not optimal. And so, the board swiftly concluded that we did need to consolidate the major trauma, because that's the best practice. That's what, in order to get verified, that's what you have to do. And our goal is to be verified within three years. Because that gives the community the highest level of comfort, that the quality of care they're getting is verified by an independent third party that's qualified to tell you you're giving the highest level of care. These are just some of the studies, and you're welcome to take a picture of that with your phone and go look up, or we can get them for you. But these are the studies that we, and one of the things the board said is, anytime we reached a conclusion about something, we wanted to make sure there were studies or evidence to support the data. So it wasn't like the board just, I said something, and the board just said, okay. If I said something, they wanted to see the data and the evidence to support what we were saying. In addition, we had an independent consultant come in, completely independent of management, that provided their own observations to the board and to the committee of the board that recommended this stuff. So, what we're creating is, now, let me talk really quickly about pediatric. Now, again, this is, this is really critically important, and I can't underscore it enough. I told you that the number of births in our region are declining. If your decline in the number of births is 7% over the last four years, then what we're projecting in pediatric volume over the next five to 10 years is about a 20% to 25% decline. Remember what I said about specialists need volume to sustain their skills? Our region benefits from having a children's hospital. And we have 25 specialties in that children's hospital to serve this region. We're now embarking on a strategy to push emergency medicine out into Bristol and Kingsport, to expand the reach of those services into these communities. If you're projecting a 25% decrease in your volume, that's a real threat, both to recruitment and to sustaining the specialists that you have. This is part of why we are trying, we're trying to do everything we can to get the volumes at NICE longer, at a sustainable level. And what's happening right now is, the volumes at the NICU and elsewhere are declining. The volumes at Holston Valley have been declining. You have, and I'll get to this in a minute, but part of why we want to do trauma, number one, the closest trauma center for children is two hours away. So by investing in a pediatric trauma program at NICE longer, we can harness those specialists that we have, and makes it more attractive for new specialists to come in. Doctors will go where they can challenge themselves and their skills. So by bringing a pediatric trauma program, it gives, it's another recruitment tool for, not only, not only for us, for doctors, but for the region. Because when you're recruiting new businesses and new companies, there's two things they care about. How are the schools? I think we all know that. And how's the healthcare access for our children? If our kids, if our employees' kids get sick, what do they have? That's why we're investing in pediatric emergency departments, because right now, the only community that has one is Johnson City. But this levels the field for Bristol and for Holston, for Kingsport, by having that service added. That's, in Sullivan County, there were 20,000 pediatric ER visits last year, that will now benefit from having access to a specialty center for emergencies. So, the system of care we're trying to create is a new pediatric trauma center, recruitment of about 10 new pediatric specialties to support the trauma program, and all of the other pediatric needs that we have in the region. Everything from pediatric neurology, pediatric surgery, GI, what are some of the other specialties? Hospitalists, neurologists...
Hospitalists, pediatric intensivists, pediatric physicians, neurology, ophthalmology.
So, so these are, these are specific specialties we want to recruit to complement pediatric trauma. The two new pediatric ERs, the medical call center, how many of y'all remember the TV show Emergency? Some of you are probably old enough. You know, the TV guy remembers it. You know, remember Rampart, you know, I have a 55-year-old? In some ways, that's sort of the vision, is, by having a verified Level 1 trauma program, when EMS is out in the field, and they're faced with a very difficult case, we want them to be able to have direct connectivity to the trauma program, that basically gives guidance on what to do, and where to bring the patient, based on the needs of the patient. In each case, when they're laying eyes, I want to make something clear about this. We can't tell EMS what to do. That's not our role. EMS is run by the counties, the cities, our municipal partners. We're not proposing in any way, shape, or form to change that relationship. We want to work collaboratively with EMS and the Department of Health to create a regional system of care that has protocols, cross-coverage, connectivity, pre-hospital connectivity to the trauma program. A lot of these things, a lot of the things that affect the lives of people, whether you bring them to Bristol, Kingsport, or Johnson City, we can stabilize these patients. The issue is getting them to the right place in the first place as quickly as possible. And that's, that's something that we want to work with EMS on. And that's why when we announced this, we said it would take about a year in order to get this done, because we know there's a process of having to work with all of our partners to get this done.
Could you expand just a minute on the two new pediatric ERs? What would be the level of the doctors in those pediatric ERs, and what should our expectation be as to services specifically?
Well, typically, you have a pediatric, a specially-trained pediatric emergency physician, or during various hours of the day, a pediatric-trained nurse practitioner, or physician assistant. And it's just, it's driven by volume. You know, on the high-volume peak times of the day, you typically have a pediatric physician in there. There's other times of the day where you'll have the ER physician, the regular ER might cross-cover, but you have mid-levels, like nurse practitioners and PAs that are specially-trained for pediatrics. The other thing is, all of our ERs will have telemedicine connectivity to NICE longer. So if there's specialty, if there's a child that has a special need, that, because specialties aren't here, they can connect with the pediatric specialist at NICE longer and give guidance. You know, send the patient to NICE longer, or, you know what, we can't care for that patient here, send them to Knoxville or Vanderbilt. We're actually having dialogue right now with Knoxville, with these Tennessee childrens, about partnering with us on bringing some of these specialties up here, because even they are having trouble with some of the specialties. So there's a lot of, this takes systems approach and partnerships. None of us can do this on our own anymore.
But you're feeling 24/7 excessive, and what's your pediatric deal?
Yes, yes. Yes, please. And Lisa is the CEO of our children's hospital, and she's the VP of our pediatric system of care, so.
So Greg and I already did, and he's trying to really frame this, and determine, you know, what it actually is going to look like, but working with the physicians that are currently practicing in those emergency departments, because, I mean, their input is critical. And, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is changing the type of service, you know, from the waiting area to the registration process, I mean, really having child-friendly practices in place. We're working a lot on protocols, anything from diagnosing an appendicitis, to, you know, treating asthma, to, you know, limiting the use of antibiotics. All of those things are pediatric-related practices that will take our into those areas. But really, when you talk about the different level of service, it's things like child-life specialists, who are specially-trained in the developmental and cognitive needs of kids. So, again, do not want to diminish the care that's already being provided in these regions, but how can we augment that and take it to another level?
Yeah, it's really important. I mean, by proposing this, it's not to say that our current ERs aren't providing excellent care. They are. It's just that children are not little adults. I mean, they do have different physical and emotional needs. I didn't know this till we went through this process, but one of the most under-diagnosed conditions of a child in the ER is child abuse. And it's because there's, it takes a special skill set to really be able to hone in on that. That's what the child-life specialists do a lot of, and the folks who are trained specifically to deal with these issues.
So if we have a decline in births, and we're going to have a decline of children over the next decades, what's the justification for having two new pediatric ERs?
Well, we still have a lot of children. We're still going to have a lot of children. And we think that, I mean, there's still going to be those needs. I also think, as we face a decline in use rates for pediatric care, for inpatient pediatric care, these are the types of things we need to do to sustain the specialists. If we don't do things to invest in this, we may run into challenges, and I believe we will run into challenges, sustaining the pediatric specialists that we already have. So, I mean, you invest where, right now, there is no such service available here. It's not here. Now, I will say, we do see children from Bristol and from Southwest Virginia at NICE longer. There are families that drive all the way there to see a pediatric ER. And we gladly take care of them. We think this is just a better use of resources.
I would go to trauma. You were talking about behavioral studies, and behavioral sciences with children.
Right.
And so, one thing that has become, you know, very near and dear to my heart, is that we have friends who have children on the spectrum now, and there are no specialists in our region to speak of. And they are going to Asheville, and having to try to ferret out these specialists and to Knoxville. So is it the intention in expanding these pediatric services, that there will be those types of specialists that can handle the behavioral needs, the cognitive needs of children in these special areas?
Yeah, it really is. And close to that continuum are things Greg and I are talking about with mental health and behavioral health for kids, and really, how that looks differently within the ER versus what we have now on the adult side. And one of the things that I'm talking with all of the hospitals about are special sensory programs for kids. Again, that's where child life comes in. You can't, you know, we don't, we don't want to, we all have those days. I remember holding my child down at the pediatrician's office, just give him a shot. I mean, you don't want to do those things. You want to have care that's designed to meet those needs, so that it limits those traumatic experiences. So those are exactly the things that we're doing.
And let me tell you, one of the things that we're really excited about is the incoming governor of Tennessee, and frankly, and Virginia, who's a pediatrician himself. I know Governor-elect Lee has made mental health a major issue, and I've had some conversations with members of his transition team about their, I mean, they're definitely interested in partnering with organizations that will expand access to some of these services. It's not just, you're right about people... It's not just, you're right, about people who are developmentally disabled or developmentally delayed. And, yeah, and, you know, then that carries off over into mental health needs of children. For instance, I met with the school superintendents, in fact, your superintendent was part of this meeting, where we talked about children that are showing up to school in crisis. And, and right now, I mean, these teachers don't know what to do with those, with those kids, and sometimes they're suicidal. And so what are the things we've offered to do that we're working on right now? We are, correct?
Yes, we are.
Is, is, because I made it, this is one of the situations where I made a commitment in a meeting before I talked to my staff about it. But I said, what if, what if we hired counselors? It's, because of the number of rural areas, it's hard to, it's hard to get all of these resources pushed out into all these communities. But what if we hired counselors at Nice Longer, so that when you had a child show up to school who had a, who was in crisis, you could bring that child, where we have connectivity with telemedicine, where that child could be assessed, and if it was determined they weren't in crisis and they needed immediate intervention, we could, we, we will hire counselors in each school district that would be deployed to go and intervene with that child. This doesn't solve all the problems. Now, keep in mind, no one's paying Valid to do this. We're doing this because it's a need that we've seen, and it's one of the things that we've, we've identified as a critical need in the region. So, we are in the process of putting this in place. And frankly, this came up because of dialogue I was having with all of the superintendents throughout the region, who, one of the superintendents actually said, you know, this was back in June or July, and he said in the meeting, "I'm actually afraid of school starting." And I'm like, "What are you talking about? You're a school superintendent." I mean, that's like a doctor saying he's afraid to go into the OR. And, and he said, you know, "These kids show up in the fall and they're in crisis because they haven't been getting ongoing community-based supports during the summer. They show up, they're in crisis, the teachers don't know how to deal with it, and they're worried about, they're worried about suicide." And look, I, I, this is a problem that is, that is manifesting itself throughout, throughout all the rural parts of the country. And we think the steps that we're taking can help mitigate that. It won't solve it, but it's a first step towards mitigating it.
Is this, is there wouldn't necessarily be a monetary return on investment for this? Is this a way that you could use some of the money that's been designated through the COPA?
Yes.
Is there a return to the footprint of the, the region?
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, we added that to our pediatric plan. And if you download our pediatric plan that we submitted to the state, this is actually, this is actually in there. So, and this was something we offered because of the need that this, because we're talking to the superintendents and hearing what their concerns are. This is what's so great about Valid, is we can sit in a meeting with our school superintendents and literally, in an hour's time, identify a need and make a decision that we're going to deploy resources to help solve that need. Nobody else is doing that. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm proud of our team, because after they got past the initial shock of, "What did you promise?", they set out to do it. And, and I have every confidence they're going to accomplish it.
I have an insurance question. So the state of Tennessee provides health insurance for children, is that correct? What's?
It depends on their income level. If it's low-income children can get care through Ten Care.
So that's probably a pretty good percentage of our population?
Yeah.
So there is a market for pediatrics since the government is basically covering their healthcare costs?
Well, it depends how you define market, because we, we, you know, Ten, our Ten Care rates haven't, haven't increased in, I think, 15 or 16 years. Every Ten Care child or adult that we see, we lose money on it. No, it's helpful that we get reimbursed. It's, it helps offset our costs. But our Children's Hospital is not a profit center. It's something we, we, we help subsidize, and these pediatric specialties are subsidized very heavily. And the, the Ten Care reimbursement doesn't nearly cover the cost of these. So that's why we're, we, you know, the commitments we're making in the COPA help cover these costs.
Okay.
That's a good question.
And the COPA, how much is required through the COPA in return?
Oh, gosh. Well, over, over 10 years, it's 350 million, but that's not just for children, that's other, other, yeah.
For pediatric, it's 27 million.
Yeah. We're going to spend more than what's required in the pediatric plan. I mean, are, are we, when you see what we've committed to, it's actually more than what, what has been required in this. Which, I, I will say, I mean, in order for us to do this, we have to generate, I think it was Sister Teresa or, what was the comment? No margin, no mission? Our hospitals have to be efficient. They have to generate the cash flow, because that's how we're paying for this stuff. So, so I, I'm going to, a couple of other issues related to Level 1. Number one, parts of, there's two or three reasons that are, that we felt were compelling about, about the Med Center being the Level 1 trauma center. Number one, this is probably the least compelling of them, but 60% of the, of the high, of the major trauma is currently being provided there today. Number two, Johnson City Medical Center is a state-designated essential access safety net hospital. There are five such hospitals in Tennessee. Johnson City Medical Center, UT, Erlanger, Vanderbilt, and the Med in Memphis. So, being an essential access safety net hospital comes with some resources, because we're required to step up anytime if there's a mass event, or, or, or public health event, or infectious disease event. The Med Center is the hospital that, that is the primary partner for those things. In order to retain your essential access safety net designation, you have to be a Level 1 trauma center, and you have to be a perinatal center. There's only six designated perinatal centers in Tennessee. Nice Longer Children's Hospital, UT, Erlanger, Vanderbilt, Lebonner, I'm sorry, I had it wrong. There's five perinatal centers and six essential access safety net hospitals. There's a hospital, another hospital in Nashville.
Metro.
Metro is, is considered an essential access safety net hospital. But, so you have to be Level 1 trauma, and you have to be a perinatal center. So if, if the designation was left Johnson City, we would lose the designation as an essential access safety net hospital, and our region would not have one. And, and, and the third is the pediatric trauma piece. I'll give you a story. This just happened last week. A little girl was de, was decompensating, did I use the right word? She was getting, and she was, her condition was worsening, so much so that she was at risk. And we have a pediatric surgeon at the Med Center, but we don't, at Nice Longer, but we don't have a, a, a pediatric trauma program at this point. Effectively, Nice Longer is sort of the de facto trauma program for children. So they end up there a lot. And in this case, you had this girl decompensating, you had a pediatric surgeon that was not a trauma surgeon, and you had two adult trauma surgeons that are not pediatricians. So they sat in a room and collaborated for I don't know how long, and they, they planned out a plan of care for this child, and all three of them went into the OR and did the surgery together. In a pediatric trauma program, you've got to have that collaboration with, with your adult specialists and your pediatric specialists. And, and you couldn't have, it would be impossible to do pediatric trauma if the Level 1 was somewhere else and you tried to do pediatric trauma at the Children's Hospital. You just couldn't do it. And so there are very practical reasons why the board chose Johnson City. And, and, and I think that, that the evidence is, is there. Now, really quick about NICU. This doesn't affect Bristol as much as it does in, at Holston Valley, because Bristol has never had a NICU. State law requires regionalization of NICU services. What we are doing in Bristol now for deliveries of high-risk newborns is consistent with state law and state policy. And there's reasons for it. Strong recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics, state law, state policy, virtually every study, high-risk newborns have better outcomes at, at centers that are high-volume, where they have pediatric specialties. So at Nice Longer, we have 25 pediatric specialties. We have 24/7 in-house neonatologist, physician coverage, or nurse practitioner neonatology coverage. We also have 24/7 pediatric residents rotating at the hospital. So there's always a doctor and there's always a neonatal specialist in the hospital, supported by 25 subspecialties. Nice Longer has the highest level of certification for perinatal care from the Joint Commission, I mentioned that earlier, for both maternal and baby care. So, you know, when you put all of those things together, it, it's the highest level of care. And if you, if you, highest level of care is not, our, our nurses here at the, at the, at the nursery at Bristol provide exceptional care. They've done it forever. And the system here works really well. A newborn is born, a child is born, they're high-risk, they notify our transport team, the transport, it just happened a couple of days ago, we just had one from Bristol. The transport team gets here, the baby gets to Nice Longer in a timely fashion. The transport team has, we have 10 nurses and 10 respiratory experts who, who are trained, half of them are dual-trained in both land and air travel. And sometimes a neonatal specialist comes with them, the, the doctor or the nurse practitioner, and they are deployed immediately when there's, when they're, when they're told there's a high-risk delivery that's occurring. That's the system that, that's designed all over Tennessee, and it works really well. Here at Bristol, this year, year-to-date, we've had 43 babies come from Bristol Regional. In the last two years, we've had 500 NICU babies from outside of Washington County, Tennessee, transported to Nice Longer, from as far away as two hours away. Just last week, two weeks, was it last week or the, the case up, two weeks ago, we had a situation where a mom showed up at a rural hospital, I don't want to say which one for HIPAA reasons, but she showed up at a rural hospital that does not have an OB program. She needed an emergency C-section. She was tra, she was transferred, she was going to be transferred to the closest hospital that had an OB program. That hospital is not a Valid Health hospital. It's on the periphery of our market. And so it went to a non- Valid hospital. They notified Nice Longer. Our transport team got to the hospital that the mom was, was being transferred to before the mother got there. And so when that baby was born, that baby was immediately stabilized and transferred to Nice Longer, where we're, we're providing exceptional care for that baby. This is not a, you know, the nurses and doctors at Holston Valley are phenomenal. They're incredibly passionate, they're good at what they do. But the reality is, there are differences in the levels of resources that they have at their disposal. You can't replicate 25 pediatric specialties at Holston Valley. It would dilute the Children's Hospital so much that you couldn't sustain the Children's Hospital. So, you know, all of the evidence points to regionalization of NICU. There are, there are 21 hospitals in our system. I think eight or nine have OB programs. Every single one of them refers patients to, refers those high-risk babies to Nice Longer. And, and except for, except for one. And our, our decision has been, it's a better, it's a better outcome, that actually, what we've learned in this process, it's actually better for the mom and the baby if they give birth at the perinatal center. And so this is a project that we need to work on wherever possible. We want to try to accelerate the options for the mom to get there, to, to have the delivery there at, at the facility. Now, about 5% of high-risk, of high-risk newborns show up, and we're not aware that they're coming. So that's what happens. When, when our transport units are called in, it's typically when a mom shows up that we didn't know about, and, and they, they call us and we deploy the transport team in a pretty timely way. Lisa, is there anything I just said that I missed the mark or, you know, make sure I, I don't want to misstate anything?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the survival rate of your transport system? And is it, have you broken that out based on locations in, of transport?
We don't look at it by location, because it's different, you know, when you think about it than Dr. Teschler will talk about at a trauma. You have the initial stabilization, so when the transport team is deployed, they, they're there, they stabilize the baby. You wouldn't move a baby if they weren't stable for transport. So, we, we can certainly break that out, but, you know, we've, we've not had, you know, issues with, with babies dying during transport, because they're stabilized prior to, before they're transported back. And that's a critical piece. And, and then, you know, and that's what's different about, about neonatology. I mean, you, you have this then-stable period where babies then don't decompensate for usually, you know, two to three days afterwards. So the transport in of itself is not risky. It's that stabilization and, you know, resuscitation at delivery, and then what services are available afterwards. That's the key.
And let me, and let me, let me piggyback onto that. That's an important question. There's two, there's two periods where it's that, that baby's most at risk. That period right after they're born, when they're, when they're not stable. If you look at the, if you look at the state's perinatal plan, Level 1 nurseries, the nurses are trained to stabilize and even resuscitate. And the doctors, you know, you're, you have to be able to do that to be a Level 1 nursery. And so part of the, the mission of the, the designated perinatal centers is they do training for all, the whole region. So we have people that do outreach and training in these hospitals to make sure the competencies of all the nurses and practitioners are up to, are up to the level of competency they need to be to do stabilization and resuscitation. So Level 1 nurseries, they're, they're designed to deal with, with even premature babies that are as low as 32 weeks. So...
Did you say there are eight?
I want to say there's about eight OB programs that we have. I don't want to, don't quote me on that number, it's, I think it's about eight.
But in each of those programs, there are nurses or professionals trained to stabilize?
Yes.
And each of these have the equipment for stabilization?
Absolutely.
And we're actually, again, we're trying to elevate that to another level. I mean, we want, we're talking about neonatology, telemedicine services, so that they can link in through telemedicine. And, and that's one thing that's interesting in the literature, I don't know if it's in this or not, but you can, you can keep about 30% of babies at the delivery facility if you have telemedicine for neonatology. So some of the babies, after that initial stabilization, could potentially stay at that delivery facility. So we're trying to even elevate that level of service at delivery at all the delivery hospitals.
And so...
How quickly was the mother that had the C-section? How quickly was she bringing mine to the child? Is there an issue of, of mothers and babies being?
The most important issue is making sure the baby gets to the highest level of care as quickly as possible, so that that baby is stable.
And again, that, that is one of the unfortunate pieces. I've, I've been there. I had a baby back in a different city and went home without my baby. And, I mean, that's a very, I mean, I, I understand that 100% completely. And again, we're, we, we look at how we can link moms in through FaceTime and lots of other different ways so that they can interact. And, and it, it is true, a lot of times dads are there, the poor moms are there, and that, I'm very sympathetic to that. Again, we want the safest, safest place for our baby.
Well, and so the, the, the key, the key, the, the first risk area is stabilizing and getting the baby where they need to be. And then the second area of risk, and this is the bigger issue, again, Lisa, if I say this wrong correctly, but the first three days, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of, of the mother and the baby.
Lots of things that were happening inside a mom, fetal circulation, all of that.
It's still there.
It takes time for that to, to, to transition over. So it's after that...
After that third day, when you start feeding the baby, the baby's at risk for, what's the, when you...
You could have necrotizing enterocolitis.
There's all kinds, I mean, you could, you could have a, when you put a...
Perforation.
A perforation.
A perforated bowel.
And that's when you actually need the specialists. That's where having those specialists help, because a perforated bowel would require surgery immediately.
It's an emergency.
And so, then anyway, those are, those are great questions. And I, yes, ma'am?
Just take a breather for a second. I think our Bristol, Virginia friends are ready to head out, so we can just take a deep breath and thank them for coming. And if anybody needs to stand up and sit down to, we'll get going again.
Randy, grab some?
Yeah, we have the Ronald McDonald House.
We have the Bassett, yes, fan, that.
Well, we appreciate it.
And we also have lots of places where we can...
Can I sit down now?
Okay, of course, if you, if you want to. Also, hold on, conversation's going on that might be important, so let's pull us back in and be able to...
One of the things I mentioned was I just visited the NICU center at Nice Longer, it's just wonderful. And there was another family there that was, I'm going to say they're about two hours away, and there was facilities at the Ronald McDonald House where they, where they stayed. And... And, uh, it really is amazing the things that happen there.
And I, I want to add, I didn't get to say this, neonatal absinthe syndrome is obviously a big problem. We, we just built a seventeen-bed special care unit, and this, this issue's sort of gotten confused a little bit. We don't think all neonatal absinthe syndrome babies need to come to Nice Longer. In fact, to the contrary, you know, we're, we're, we're carrying form here in Bristol and Abington. Wherever it happens, we, we do have structures in place to care for them. There are some that need a higher level of care. What we built at Nice Longer, frankly, a lot of them don't even need NICU care. I mean, it, it, it's not a, it's not a life-threatening medical condition that requires a, a, a neonatal unit. It's, it requires something very different. So the, the special care unit, the seventeen-bed unit, their private rooms are quiet, and that's what the babies need. They need that connectivity with the family and the, the quiet time and, and obviously some other medical interventions. So, you know, that, that issue has got a little bit mixed in with this NICU issue. It's, they're two totally separate matters. And we, we're, we, we want to keep those services as close as possible to where people live and not, not have every neonatal absinthe syndrome baby coming to Nice Longer.
Well, it sounds like through development of programming is that, you know, I, I would like to think that, you know, we've heard a lot about like, well, this is what they do in Nashville, this is what they do in Memphis and Chattanooga. I would like to think that as we progress through this, that we are better than the national market, the Memphis, the Chattanooga, the North Carolina. And I think that what, what is so important to our being optimal is, uh, the, the, and I hear this, uh, the human aspect of it is that we're not going to develop to be such a large market that we can be person and our care. I think that, that that's very important. I, I used a NICU unit in Johnson City three years ago, delivered twins, and one delivered well, she was jaunis, but the other delivered and had real respiratory issues. I could not be discharged at all. I'd been there, I'd been in intensive care for over five weeks, and after delivery, I had to stay on the pediatric floor because our daughter was in pediatric room and our son was in the NICU unit. And, um, you know, and I went, uh, you know, I had come from Nashville, grew up there, and my, my brother had, and his wife had delivered twins in a hospital that did not have a NICU unit, and they'd lost both of them. And so, of course, when Rush and I had our children, I was hypersensitive to that, and, uh, you know, but having said that, there, um, we were very young, you know, Rush was working here in Bristol, I was there, there were days that would go by that I was there alone, and, you know, there are just circumstances that present themselves, but just Rush and I...
You, you make a great point, and I, I will tell you, you're exactly right. We shouldn't, and I think, and I think Dr. Testerman might want to speak to this, we, we're in, we're, we're following the evidence, but what we're doing, we think, does create something that a lot of people will watch. Trauma access for rural areas is a problem all over the country, and developing an integrated inclusive system, keep in mind, we have twenty-five percent, and we will have twenty-five percent of Tennessee's trauma centers right here, uh, in our region. There's still, there will still be three trauma centers here. But when you, when you overlay that with, with what we want to do to partner with EMS, what we will have will be something, a lot of people talk about Maryland as a model because they have, they have the one level one with the inclusive system. We think people are going to look at what we're doing and, and, and I think feel pretty good about it. This, this wasn't a scenario where we were trying to copy others. I think we, we really are trying to create something that's unique to what we need. So I think you make a very good point.
Can I tag in something on that? Just to say, I mean, you're absolutely right, and some of the things, I mean, this is not in the discussions, but, I mean, some of the things that we're developing things for now are care coordination for complex kids. I'm a NICU nurse by background, and I have seen far too many families torn apart. It, it's very stressful, especially when you have a child that dies so many times. It, it just, and, and we, we really, as a health system, we want to take that on. I mean, we want to take on that support for families. We, we don't want people to have to quit their jobs to become healthcare providers for complex kids. So that is absolutely a critical component, and, and especially what you do for kids. It really is taking care of that entire family. So we want to move past this so we can get to the next step, what we really have to do.
I think you were about, I thought you were about to say something.
Oh, gosh, it was about two minutes ago. No, I was going to say, they have these little signs up all over the walls, and I, what was the name, can you tell us what the youngest child...
I can tell you the smallest.
Okay.
Thirteen point seven ounces.
Thirteen ounces.
I checked it.
It's amazing, it really is.
Well, we're, we're, um, we, um, I think that what I, what I wanted to really impart upon you is, first of all, we, we appreciate the support for the hospital here at Bristol Regional. I mean, it is a very important asset for this community, and we are deeply committed to it. I, I, I don't know if our lead independent director wants to say anything, but he wasn't expecting to. David lives here in Bristol and is, is, um, one of the things that, one of the things that the board of ballot did early on, we, we wanted to make sure that as we made decisions, that the decisions were good for our whole region, that we weren't getting into fights between the different communities, that we were really trying to say, okay, looking at the whole system and knowing what the external challenges are that we have, how do we create the best system approach? What you're hearing from Lisa, you know, with, with, with our transport program is not just, you know, sending the people to collect the child and bring them back to Johnson City, but within each hospital, how do we create immediate response teams to help stabilize children and then get the transfer going? It's a wholly systemic approach. We have somebody who's overseeing pediatrics for the whole system so that we have standards that no matter where, no matter where you are within our system, you, you have the highest level of care that's available. And, and, and that was something that was really important to the board as they were going through this process. And David, I don't know, I hate to put you on the spot, but if there's anything I haven't said that would, would adequately represent the board's position on this.
No, I, I, I think, of course, we've gone through this many, many times, and I think the board's perspective was, let's take the emotion out of the decision. Let's get fact-based analysis, and then make the best decision based on the facts. And it was all data-driven. And we have a board member in Smith County, we have in Scott County, we have a board member, you know, in Resolman County and in other areas, and a couple of doctors on there, so, and I think that the other key component was, we set up, as, as part of our master affiliation agreement, we set up an integration council, which was a collection of independent, non, you know, William Wampser for a class or something there, and a few doctors, a couple of board members, some people that dealt with NICU issues, people that dealt with trauma issues. And evidence was presented to them in a non-biased format. I attended, they had two meetings, I attended one. Totally, here's the facts, here's the way we see it. It was an independent, independent, took seven months to do the independent study. So this was not a snap decision, but the board overwhelmingly, as the integration council recommended to the board, in a unanimous decision, this is what we need to do to better our community and better our health system. I am really excited, and I don't know if you know, this, this pediatric ER is something that I am really excited about. I had a firsthand experience with one of my grandchildren in Naples, and there was a pediatric ER on a Saturday night at eight o'clock that we could go to. Pediatrician right there, fixed the situation. So we talked about this in the COPA, I was, I said, I'm all in for this, so. And I think you people that have grandchildren and small children will be too, so. I think this is a great thing for us and for Holston Valley.
Can I ask you, back, back to trauma, with Bristol living to a level-three trauma center, will we lose our status as, as a certified stroke center?
No, no, you'll still be, you're, you're a primary stroke center, there's nothing to do with it. Yeah, so, so I think your primary stroke, uh, Holston Valley's primary stroke, the med center's comprehensive stroke, and they all work, they all collaborate together to make sure the patient gets where they need to go. But that doesn't affect it at all, and the heart attack network doesn't change at all either.
So we're, it sounds like we're not going to lose, Greg and I talked a little bit about we're not, we're not going to lose anything. Is the main designation then from level-one, two versus level-three, is it, I think you mentioned it was kind of a teaching, is that, is that where you, is it the main...
Yeah, and that, I didn't get back to that, that's a good point. Level, the difference between level-one and two is the number of specialties that are required to be on-call. For the level-one, the, the general surgeons have to be in-house twenty-four-seven. Level-two, they don't need to be. The research piece, this is what got our attention. This blew me away, actually. As we were going through this process, we found out, and, and by the way, the, the reason this came up, and I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't phrase it, I should have, but one of our board members asked the question during the process. She wanted to know, walk me through the demographics, the ages of our, of our stroke, of our, of our trauma patients, and, and sort of give me the characteristics of the types of trauma you see. When we went through that exercise after she, after she asked about it, remember that, Fifty percent of our trauma is age sixty-five and older. Eighty-five percent of that fifty percent are geriatric falls. So it's all two thousand, almost two thousand one hundred of our fifty-two-hundred trauma cases are geriatric falls. A lot of those are preventable. And so here you had two level-one trauma centers. That's something we should have known, that's something we should have studied, that's something we should have been doing outreach on. The reason, and I asked the people who are running the trauma centers, why, why didn't we, why didn't we figure this out? And both directors told me, because we spend all of our time just trying to make sure we have enough call coverage. That's literally what's occupying all their time, is just, they're keeping their heads above water, just keeping coverage. So now we know, this is going to be the first big project we do, is we're going to try to study, what is the origination of these falls? Where is it happening? Are they happening in nursing homes? What are the common factors there? They happen at home, what are the common factors there? And then how do we intervene? And frankly, I think this is something we can partner with you guys and the other municipalities on, because it's going to take a lot of education. Once we know what is causing it, then it's a lot, it's all about educating people on how to protect themselves. And, and if, boy, in five years, if we can look back and say, instead of fifty-two-hundred trauma cases, we had four thousand, I mean, that would be a huge victory. So, that, that's a great question. That's the kind of stuff research, and Dr. Testerman...
We just had one coming. We had a patient, just two nights ago, I was on-call, and we had a gentleman about seventy years old who had been a, a patient of ours about a month ago, had some various injuries after a fall. We got him over there, he had some fractures, went to rehab. He goes home, well, he can't, he comes back with another fall Tuesday night. And so we find out that he has early Parkinson's disease. And so a lot of our older patients who keep, keep falling have reasons for that that really aren't corrected and can be better taken care of through geriatric-oriented type prevention. So that's one of our...
This is a huge opportunity for us.
But, but the teaching aspect, level-one versus level-two, is there teaching also in level-two?
Oh, yeah.
So this is all a specialist, and there was a good twenty or thirty of them up there that's at a level-one status, and maybe a few less for level-two, quite a few level, less for level-three. Those, we will still have in Bristol and in Kingsport, twenty-four-hour access.
Oh, yeah.
In essence, we're still at the level-one or level-two trauma areas, but we don't have the teaching aspect?
Well, you, you don't, you, you...
We actually do, we have almost all the specialties. What happens is, in order to be certified, I'm going to repeat, by the way, so...
I apologize, I shouldn't have used there.
In order to be certified as a level-two trauma center, you have to have the number of specialties that are, that are listed there, and some of those specialties that Alan said are like urology or ophthalmology, that we don't always have on, on-call, but we rarely ever need them. So in order to, to have that, that, you have to have those on-call twenty-four-seven, at sixty-five in order to be a level-two trauma center. So again, we want to put our resources where we most need them. So although we'll be a level-three, we'll have all the specialties primarily that we have today at Bristol tomorrow, or a year from now, whenever we put the switch from level-two to level-three. These specialties will still be there.
I was told that we would not really be a true level-three, that we would almost be an intermediary between a level-three and a level-two.
That's true.
They don't really classify it that way, but we are very...
And really, a, a level's more of a, maybe a label, but the people who are really there and dealing with all these patients, it's, it's going to be very similar, and our physicians are, our trauma physicians are still going to be working there, probably in-house just like they are now, and so it's not really going to be really a whole lot different for the vast majority of patients.
But the thing we're going to have to work on, and we, one of our, our challenges to work on, and whatever it takes any year to do this, is just work with, with EMS to make sure we're helping support them, they're very busy, because they have destination guidelines based on, on the illnesses and the, the accident that the patient has had. We're going to work with both the state of Tennessee and Oklahoma, Virginia to, to work on protocols, actually have meetings set up with them, and, and to support EMS locally. Our, our primary position here is to make sure EMS has the information they need, do their job degree, we're not trying to turn our luck, David Allen said, we're there to support EMS.
Because Tennessee and Virginia's designations, pardon, they're not exactly the same, but they're a little bit different. Would it be, have you already done this, and I just haven't, I mean, they're all different. Can you define exactly what will be in our trauma center as far as this level of...
Specialties, decisions.
The specialties, exactly what that's going to look like?
One thing that may, may help is to not confuse on-call with on-staff.
Right.
And so it's the on-call piece that, and again, there, there's even, you know, within, you know, they have to be readily available, so within thirty minutes. So it, it takes away some of that, but they're still on-staff, they're still available for consults, it just, so, I mean, yeah, they can certainly frame...
My point being that, you know, as we move through this, education is key, and that, and, and I, I believe that we have an intelligent constituency that if given the facts, you know, legitimate facts and information, you know, can, can then process, and it will increase their comfort level. And if they're not comfortable with that, then I think it's only fair that they be able to, to express that. But I haven't seen anything yet that well defines exactly what our trauma, yeah, would look like if it's not going to be a true three, it's going to be somewhere there. And I understand Dr. Testerman, it's a label, but still to expand on that, I think would be very helpful in communicating to our constituency.
And to piggyback on that, um, a little bit, where I come from, I, I was in the medical field for several decades, I guess it was, looking back, but, uh, so I used to think that the doctors had all the power. And then I came on city council, and I sat on the hospital board for several years, and then I saw that maybe the doctors didn't have all the power because the hot, you know, I figured out pretty quickly that the hospital serves as like the business unit, and they pretty much dictate the bounds within how everything's going to take place, according to insurance, according to state law, and, and they kind of set all that up. And I kind of lost my train of thought when you were talking.
Where the power lies, where the power lies.
Right, right. And so, you know, sitting on city council, we really appreciate you guys coming to the table and talking about your rationale. I completely understand where you're coming from as far as the merger and the, the dollars and where, where you have to make changes and sacrifices and all of that. However, our primary role is to represent the citizens, and the citizens, you know, are very concerned about the, the level of... are very concerned about the, the level of care, and a lot of different levels of concerns about economics, you know, what's going to happen to, you know, to our people buying cars here, you know? Are they going to go to Johnson City for all of their healthcare? All of a sudden, are they going to eat there? Are they going to shop there? Are they going to buy cars there? Are we going to lose out? You know, it's, there's, there's a lot of...
Are all the doctors now going to live there? Or is that going to be the trip hub? And is obvious specialty going to be taken away from Bristol? These are just, it's our responsibility to communicate with you.
Right.
And I think...
It's in our community.
I think that one, one piece that's missing for me, as I'm hearing from you guys, as I'm hearing from citizens, is the COPA aspect. And so, what I would like to ask city manager is to, can we get from the state, or can someone provide for us maybe highlights of the COPA agreement, and what is going to take place according to that? So that we can all kind of be on the same page as, you know, and we can just kind of all come together and, and have an understanding from you guys, from the state, from the community. This is how everything is, this is the agreement, this is what's going to happen.
Yeah, we'd be happy to come back and actually walk through the COPA with you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's riveting.
If we could have like, possible chats, you know, just the meeting.
On one page, you were here.
There are some of us here that are truly nerds and would enjoy that.
I, I resemble that reward.
A question, is this your last slide?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I'm...
I just didn't want to miss anything since we were, that was your last slide.
I just have one other question that's very near and dear to my heart. I spent the night at Bristol Oral Medical Center last night. I've spent a few nights there. My mom is inpatient right now and has received exceptional care, and I'm very appreciative of that. Although I would say the stuff that is could use a little touch, but...
You should've tried the colanders.
I'm just, I'm just implying, I'm saying, you know, but, but I appreciate the care that she's receiving. One thing that is very near and dear to my heart, which I would think would be very near and dear to Eric's heart, is the hospice house. And just, I'll just ask straight up, is the hospice house going to remain and have patients sit there?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I have been rightly or wrongly to believe that, and that there is an issue in, through the merger, that there was an issue of trying to be sure that there was a contract with a pharmacy, the pharmacy. I just, there's some things in Bristol that, that are so important, and you touched on them, is that our CyberKnife is a real, real point for us. The Nice Wonder Cancer Infusion Center, we began our journey in the Leonard family. And when all of this about the merger came about, I was told that things that had been developed through foundations and family donations would remain intact. And is that correct, or are those different specialties and those different opportunities, are they subject to change?
No, they, they remain intact, and if, if there was, the answer is yes, they remain intact. Now, in the life of a hospital, unrelated to the merger, I mean, just in the life of a hospital, if somewhere down the road you're making improvements, you typically go back to the donor and make sure that they understand what you're doing and make sure they're okay with it. And that's what we would do in any, in any situation, no matter what hospital. Because I think pretty much all of our hospitals have had, have had donations for various things. And so, this is something we have a lot of experience with. As to hospice, there were, there were some hiccups with the, with the integration. I've had personal friends use that hospice in Bristol, this one here in Bristol, most recently, a young man whose mother worked for Valid for a number of years. He was diagnosed at 14 with cancer, he passed away at 18, and he spent his last days in this hospice house. So, it's, it's a prize not just for Bristol, but for the whole region. And we are deeply committed to this hospice.
I'm sure you know that Eric's mother-in-law was, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be able to have her.
Well, I didn't know that.
Sally Blanton, Dr. Frank Blanton, Senator's wife.
Well, I didn't know that, that's, that's...
Was, yeah.
It's important to read, she volunteers there, and it's very important to our family and to the whole community. It is, as Alan said, it is a prize for, for our whole region to have that.
Right, and my, our father-in-law, Rush's father, passed away there. And it is so important, and now walking through this, this part of life with my mom, I can't tell you how important it is.
He'll be there for you.
I've got a question. As, as you alluded to and helped kind of set the record regarding the emergency services, my mind goes to examples. I think of a number of years ago, as the EKG systems were provided support where people could then, get them at the hospital and help maybe a technician understand what was going on, or at least they knew when they rolled in what was going on. Is, is this access to trauma professionals helping them, one, to know where to go, but also helping kind of the protocol they need to start if they have what they need on the truck?
We're developing a very comprehensive call center, or maybe you could call it a kind of connect center. And it's going to, it's going to track and locate all the emergency vehicles and all the accidents. And so, we'll be able to tell, that'd be like being in a FAA, you know, flight place. You're going to see all these events and emergency vehicles and responders and so forth. We want to keep track of those and coordinate those and get those to people in the right place as soon as possible.
Truth or not, you know, I've been told that Valid intends to own and run all of the EMS services.
Not true. No, no, no.
Look, I'm just...
You run one.
No.
You've got an EMS service here, you run.
No, we...
Right, which is what I'm saying, is that there, you know, there are all kinds of rumors out there.
Oh.
And, and, you know, you know, I'm taking it up for you to dispute on this one, that, that, you know, municipalities and county will still own and run their EMS services.
Actually, I think that's a great point. Our, you know, our ability now is to work together to coordinate across the counties, to see how they, if they can help each other. If, let's say that there's a truck out of one county, and we can help, let that county know that there's a fellow helping from somewhere else can help you. That's, that's what we want to do. We don't want to, we don't want to own any EMS services or transport services. That's not the business that we want to be in at all. We're not one to...
You know, I'll tell you an example, this happened a few weeks ago, I've used it in a few venues, but a lot of, you know, the amount of trauma doesn't show up in our trauma centers. I mean, it, it goes to the closest hospital. In fact, we mentioned geriatric falls, you know, hip fracture repair surgery is typically what's done when somebody falls and breaks a hip. You know, in Abington, they did 124 hip fracture repairs last year. Laughlin in Greenville did 65. A lot of trauma doesn't show up in the trauma centers. And what happened in one case just a few weeks ago, and this, this is not, it's not isolated. This happens more than, more than just a little bit. A patient showed up at one of the rural hospitals with, with the traumatic injury. And the patient waited three hours to be transported, because there was only one ambulance rolling in that county, and they couldn't afford to take it, take the ambulance out, you know, off the street. And had we had some, a little bit more, and I would say, I think EMS does a lot to coordinate, I really do. But, but it's not, it's a system that can always be improved, and, and, but in that instance, had there been another EMS that said, "All right, we'll get, we got your back. We'll, we'll cover your county while you transport that patient." That's the kind of stuff that I think actually improves the access to care. In that instance, it was a hospital-to-hospital transfer. And so, but now, if it's, if there's an accident in the field, I think there's, the coordination is a lot better. I mean, I think if it's a direct trauma in the field, I do think they actually do coordinate a lot. But, but in that particular instance, a patient needed to get to a trauma center, it took three hours. And, you know, those are, those are, those are just anecdotal examples, but, but they happen. And we think that's why a protocol-driven system with connectivity to us, where there's communication between EMS and the trauma center, or the trauma control, saying, you know, where do we take this? And by the way, it doesn't, it's not necessarily just trauma. It could also, it could also relate to stroke, it could also relate to, you know, other types of emergency conditions, heart attacks and things like that. You know, a lot of medical conditions like stroke and heart attacks are in many cases more deadly than trauma. In fact, in most cases, they are. And, and the systems we're talking about for trauma are the same systems we've put in place with the Heart Attack Network and the Stroke Network. It's the same approach, and, and so...
Is there another rumor out there, I could address it, that's the Royal Med Flight with the Virginia State Police. As you know, they're based in Abington, and so, historically, Wellmont has helped support that. We put the crew actually on, on that, all the paramedics and EMTs and nurses are part of, have been part of Wellmont, and they're part of Valid today. We've met with the sergeant and lieutenant at the research room about that, and recommitted our support more forward. And that's, we have employees specialties from our flight services as it is today, because it's really important. I mean, paying that, maybe more, they go to specific sites for car wrecks and things like that. And the great thing is, they provide that service free of charge to the citizens of South Dakota. And a lot of those come actually play a part of those initiatives, and so, we're continuing that support more forward. So, if someone says a med bike's gone away, it's not, we're going to continue supporting that. And it's a great part of what you've had in the past, or continue to do.
It's about a million dollars a year that we contribute for that.
So, with, does Valid, will Valid own Med Flight now, or is it still...
It's, it's still by the Virginia State Police. We just, all we do is contribute the crew to that, that process.
We've got Tennessee.
Tennessee, so, in Tennessee, there are two flight services today. There was a legacy Wellmont, legacy Mount States Services. We're actually in the process of creating a RFP right now, to have one flight service across all of Valid, and also keep Med Flight there. And we're asking, have we maintained all the stations that we had today? So, five stations, including one for us on the motorway.
But we won't own it, I mean, it's just an independent company.
So, with the call center being developed, it looks like, you know, if there's a car accident within any of, of your service region, that you guys are going to be it. I mean, you're, you kind of have like a monopoly on the, on the area, because, you know, where else are they going to go? It's going to be under your, under your care. So, if you have someone that goes to one hospital, and then your protocol dictates that they be sent to another hospital, are they going to be double billed?
Well, hopefully, hopefully, if, if we do this right, they go to the right hospital to begin with. That's the goal.
But if they don't, and you make the call...
Well, that happened, and that happens today. I mean, there, there's cases that are brought to Bristol that, that end up being stabilized and transferred. And there's cases brought to all of our hospitals that are stabilized and transferred all the time. I don't quite know, that's a question I have to get back to and answer back to you on. What happens today, I believe, is if it's hospital, I don't want to speculate, but I'm told if it's hospital-to-hospital, we end up having to pay for it.
That's interesting, too, but we're...
So... Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, so, they, they can bill the patient an insurance for the transport to the hospital, but if we transport from hospital A to hospital B, we end up having to pay for it.
The transport is, but I guess all the services will be, you know, if you have one doctor, you'll have one doctor bill, one...
It used to have an emergency room and physician bill.
Yeah, you can't double bill though. Under Medicare, you, you, well, I, you, you can't double bill a patient if you're, if you're within the same, within the same ownership system.
So, if, if it's, I guess, if it's the same patient, I don't know if I just answered my question. So, if you have, you can't charge for one service here and within the same incident have the same service?
I don't think you can, and, and it would, I would, I want to, I want to get back to you with that answer. But keep in mind, that happens today, that, that's not new. That, I just, it's easy for people...
But with this being new, with, with this being a merger, with this being new protocol set in place, you know, that's going to be something that, that your clients are going to be concerned about.
Yeah, if, if, my, my point is, I think, is if, if we do this right, that should not happen as often. So, it, it actually will reduce the, what I'm saying is, that's a problem today. And if by doing what we're doing, the goal is to make sure they get to the right place in the first place and not have to be then transferred.
That would be something that people would appreciate.
Well, we, that's, that's the goal behind this. So, I, but I, you ask a good question, I don't, I don't know the answer to it, and I'll give you the answer for that. Oh, that's a great question.
I've got, I've got a few more comments to, and then we can see if we're ready to, to end up. But I think this is pretty exciting for the systematic approach and the amount of research and data-based that I think it's also probably not at the same level y'all are thinking, but this council likes to get lots of background information, et cetera. But I think it's really exciting in getting to the root causes that really makes a difference, and how you go about making decisions, et cetera. Also, it never was talked specifically, but I'm really excited about trauma-informed care, which has nothing to do with trauma centers, except it does for pediatric trauma centers or whatever. But in Johnson City, through Becky Haas's work, working toward being a trauma-informed care community, and hopefully, we'll learn some more about that. And now with Becky working with Valid, that's really exciting. And also, just learning about the brain research, and just phenomenal for stuff that intuitively we knew, but not to the extent that we're finding out it's true. Particularly trauma, early trauma effect on physical health later in life with toxic stress. I mean, that's just blows your mind with some of that. Also, some of the stuff, I've worked with Bristol's Promise, and we follow America's Promise's Five Promises. And at some point a while back, somebody made the extremely wise observation that those Five Promises are also things that adults need to. So, it may be, once we get into doing our ERs that are child-centered and address some of the trauma, we find out that we need to be doing the same thing for the adults that come in. So, I think that'll be pretty interesting as that goes forward.
We actually have some models of that in police now.
For adults?
Some of the pediatricians are screening kids, and then they're also screening parents.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because it's, it, that's where it comes from. Right, 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 real interesting stuff.
I am so excited to hear you bring up trauma-informed care. That's a, that's a new area of opportunity for us. And frankly, I think, I think we're kind of leaders in that.
Johnson City with the work that they've been recognized by since, um...
Well, we're, we're pushing that out throughout the region. That's why we hired Becky. That and my wife would probably divorce me if I didn't.
Good, good, good. Also, I wanted to thank Elliot Moore, wherever she is hiding over there.
She's probably launching an Alabama...
Worked with, through Bristol's Promise as a coalition of organizations that work, and mostly nonprofits, but health departments and Gary Mason's folks attend, et cetera. But we had Tony Cat come a year ago, November, to talk about the ACC with the group, and we had 50, 60 people in the room. And then Elliot initiated for Todd Norris to come in in July before the comment period was over for the ACC. And I think that was extraordinarily helpful for those organizations, and that presentation could be included in an abbreviation or whatever, so people understand. One of the, and one of the things that was hard to hear is that everybody's doing their homework, and there won't be as much money going into the communities for two to three years to get everything in place, et cetera, which is, again, being really careful. And also, wanted to say, it sounds like the follow-up things that I have are the cost transport, the highlights of the COPA, and partner, working with EMS, that'll affect us as well as others. And then hugely is PR and the education. We have a great community relations department that has wonderful technology, et cetera. So, doing programs on falls and prevention and different things like that, we certainly, certainly can help. And I think also, this has been, has been... And I think also this is being, has been recorded and if, and can go, be put on our channel for anybody who wants to sit through it. But I think the information y'all have provided is extremely complicated and extremely helpful for helping to understand where things are. Um, yeah.
You know, when we talked about the format of tonight's meeting, I, you know, Bristol, we, uh, I hope you've had a different experience here tonight and, and you can see what type of council we have. We're a council that delivers in transparency, it's very important to us. We also, ah, possibly, that it's very important that our public have awareness. And I was not overly delighted that it's not encouraged to participate to some degree, I'll just be very honest. I think it's very important, and to the point that Mel did make, it's very important that, uh, there's a lot of misinformation out there. There have been some rollouts that have not gone well. Uh, there is some back information that is unfortunate. But we need to be sure for, for this to be successful, and it can be, well, we need for our public to be almost overly educated. And I hope that as we move forward, uh, where there's a well-behaved public, that they will be invited to, um, hear a lot of what you, you have said tonight with us, and that they will have an opportunity to have their questions and take their respect for them.
Let me say, I, I think, uh, first of all, I, I personally had a chance to sit with you and the board of Manolm in, in Kingsport, and, you know, what's evident to me is that, yes, there was a lot, there was a lot, there's an old saying that misinformation gets halfway around the world before the truth gets its shoes on.
Right.
Um, when we rolled this out, uh, there were some folks that said, said a lot of things very quickly about, about what we were doing that wasn't true. And that just, it sort of implicated the power of social media and how quickly that stuff spread. And, um, you know, just, just last week, there was a, a Facebook post by somebody who went on and did a video that said that two babies died in transport, which wasn't true. And, you know, I, I mean, the, the, it could have been really harmful. Um, and fortunately, people, well, unfortunately, people were reposting that as though it was true. And we started contacting those folks and they immediately apologized and took their reposts down. I, I am, I am, I regret that that happened, um, but it did give us an opportunity. And I'm, I'm somebody that does try to see the cup as half-full. It gave us the opportunity to engage with you guys. And both you and the BMA in Kingsport, I think, took a serious approach to this, didn't react to it, uh, let, let the sort of wave of information get out there, and then sat and asked the questions. And we're grateful for that. We want to get this right. We don't, we, we live here too. We, our board wants to get this right. And, and we don't operate in a vacuum. We know the things we do have an impact on, on the people that you are elected to represent. This is not us and you, it's us. And so, um, I'm grateful for the feedback, the input. I, I'm excited about the, the trauma-informed care that you raised. It's something that we're very passionate about. And, you know, just, we're grateful for the opportunity. And this has been extremely refreshing and helpful to us too.
Do you think you will have an opportunity for the public to engage?
Well, we've been engaging.
I know, but moving forward, uh, Bristol, I don't know if our public has really had an opportunity to engage, to, to just hear what you had to say and to ask the questions in a respectful, let me emphasize, a respectful manner. I know that some of this has gotten off the grid and has been very disrespectful for that. I just apologize for a minute to him. But, uh, but when we got ready, when the communities at large got ready to go through the merger process, there was a lot of information, there was a lot of opportunity for engagement. And we're at another juncture of life in our community of, of change, with what we would hope to foster change. I would just encourage you to have an opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think when there was opportunity for public input before things were going forward, I don't think people really understood or could foresee what, what was going to happen. And now that they're seeing changes, it's, it's a little shocking and, um, I think, yeah, over educate. And definitely, you know, we want to partner and get information out to the public, so we need anything that we can do as, um, our public relations department is excellent. They, they do really good work, so anything that we can do to help educate, um, we would be glad to do that, or our TV station or different avenues that we have.
Well, thank you guys very much. We really, we appreciate you guys taking the time.
We want to, um, thank everybody who came to this evening. We want to thank our city staff for being here and helping to take care of us. Um, we want to thank the media for being here, our own media, as well as other, uh, folks, really appreciate that. Um, and we really want to thank all of you from Valid, those of you who participated up here, and Andy back there, and others, um, for taking time and, um, and it takes time to go through all this, so we greatly appreciate you for doing that.
One more comment, and it's important, you know, our, our board, just, just like you guys, I mean, it's a thankless job. I mean, that, you, 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 you all signed up for this, our board signed up to be on our board. And, and I think that you all do it, you all do it with eyes wide open. Governance is really important, whether it's governing a city or governing a health system. And I, what I will tell you, I've been doing this for almost 30 years. The board that is, that is, that, that is responsible for, that has the fiduciary responsibility for Valid Health, and I'm not saying this because my lead director's sitting there, I would say if he wasn't here, it's the best, most engaged board I have ever, ever witnessed in healthcare. I mean, they, these are people that are a broad, it's a competency-based board, they all bring something very different and unique. You have everyone from Scott Nicewonder to, uh, Julie Bennett, who's a general counsel at the Speedway, to Barbara Allen, who has a business up here in Bristol, Snowaway, storage, uh, small business owners, retired people. And when they, when they sit in a room, it is a powerful thing. I mean, they, they are, they ask great questions. And so I just, it, it's hard for me to put the right words to this. You can be confident with the board that is, that is tasked with the responsibility of operating Valid. And, um, and, and just as I, I would tell you, I mean, it's a hard job, not asking, I mean, they're all, I, you know, I would, I, I offer them all 100% increase for combat pay, but none of them get paid, so, uh, but it's, so I appreciate what you guys do, um, and I appreciate what our board does. And I, and I just, I think it's important that people know that. We're, they're not, they're not nameless, faceless, and known somewhere. I mean, these are real people that live here that, that care about this.
I think your presentation, the in-depth and discussion helps us to have confidence when we see the amount of study, the amount of work, what has happened behind the scenes, that increases that ability to do that, so.
We all have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Are we turned? My back comes.
[laughter]